Good morning. Annie?
Good morning, Jen.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Do you have any of this 9:57, Annie?
I do.
Okay, just checking. My phone always is ahead. Is Mayor Sheehy going to join us soon? Jess?
He should be in a few minutes.
Okay, a logistics question or a procedural question. Tom, do we need a vote to transfer the chairmanship to you?
Typically, we do, but it's usually just it's usually just the vote of the mayors. So.
Okay. So if Cal could make that motion, I could second it. I'll turn over the proverbial gavel.
Yeah, that works.
Hello? Good morning, mayors.
Good morning. Morning, Mayor Sheehy.
Good morning.
I can see a whole bunch of people logging on. Okay, I think it's time to get started. So, good morning. I call this meeting the order of the Tri-City Council on Tuesday, July 27, 2021, at 10:01 a.m. And welcome you to this meeting. We're holding this through technological means, and members of the public could attend through remote conferencing, and they were invited to submit comments by yesterday, I guess. No, by nine o'clock today. So today, we are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I invite you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Under the scope of liberty, justice, and
Thank you. We've had a roll call. Now, I think we will have some guests today or some elected officials and other dignitaries, but I think they're all on the agenda. Is there anyone here that could would like to be recognized as a special guest? Would the mayors like to introduce anyone? Okay, if not, we are going to move on to the annual appointment of our chairperson. It's been a pleasure and honor to serve this past year, but it's time for me to pass the gavel. And as we do every year, and so very I'm very glad to see that Mayor Brady is here and ready to accept the gavel. And so we're going to do a motion. I need a motion, Mayor Sheehy, to transfer the chairmanship to Mayor Brady.
Yeah, I still move to appoint Mayor Brady as the chairman for the next year.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? No opposition. And with that, the motion carries, and Mayor Brady, I'll turn this meeting over to you.
All right. It's with great pleasure that I accept the chairmanship for this coming year. And this will be my last year, so whoever my replacement is will start it, start fresh come next, next year. Let's move on. Call to the public. As Jen mentioned, anyone wishing to address the committee where the council was asked to submit names. Annie, has anyone done that?
Good morning, Mayor. We have not received any written comments from the public, nor have we received any registrations to speak during this time. We do have members participating, but just for listening.
All right. Well, are there any members who are listening that would like to address the council? I hear no one speaking up, so we'll move on to the next item. Approval of the minutes from the April 21, 2021 Tri-City Council meeting. Annie sent copies of those minutes to everybody previously. Are there any, is there any need to correct any of those? Otherwise, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes for the April 21 meeting.
I move that we accept the minutes of the April 21, 2021 meeting.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Then let's move on. Item number six. Update from the Arizona Department of Health Services Director and Mojave County Health Department regarding COVID-19. I haven't checked. Do we have anybody from the Health Department on?
Mayor Brady, I am expecting Denise Burley to join us. I do not have her with us yet. If we want to come back when she's able to join. She did let me know that she did not have confirmation from Dr. Chris that she was available to attend today, so I'm not expecting her.
All right. Well, Annie, if she comes on and I miss it, would you please notify me? And we'll get her on just as quick as we find opportunities.
Yes, sir.
Okay, then. Item number seven is updates from the Mojave County Board of Supervisors or elected officials or their designees. Looking over the participants here. Help me out. Do I have any elected officials that would like to speak?
We do have Supervisor Lingan Feltzer with us today.
Oh, Travis, welcome. Would you care to give us an update on what's going on at the county from your perspective?
Thank you, Mayor Brady. Good morning, everybody. Certainly, you know, our radar, we're still heavily involved in the water issues that all of us are involved with. With the legislature adjourned, speaking with Regina Cobb, I fully expect that the work, the very important work of the Mojave County West Basin Water User Study Committee will be starting here pretty soon. I know that she is working with our lobbyists, Patrick Cunningham, Jeffrey Cross from High Ground on agendas for that, for that study committee. I know Mayor Miles is a part of that as well, and I look forward to this year getting into that work. We're really trying to build some momentum and some support between now and the next time the legislature convenes in January for the Rural Management Area legislation, for the irrigation non-expansion area legislation, and also the fourth priority water transfer prohibition upon fourth priority water transfer legislation. So, you know, hopefully we'll be successful. As everybody knows, Regina's going to be termed out, and next session is her last session, and she's been our water champion for the last several sessions. So hopefully we'll be successful in that. See what else. The, as you all know, the county is set to pass our budget. There was an initial push by Sam, our county manager, and his staff to implement a new sales tax, very small sales tax that is, that's failed, that required a unanimous vote of the board. We had a board member, a supervisor, that did not want to do that. So we're going to go back to a more, I guess, regular budget, a budget that we've seen in past years. You know, but otherwise, what I would like to do is just answer any questions that those of you may have for the county. If I don't have an answer for you, I'd be happy to get an answer for you and get back to the group. I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Do any, does anybody have any questions of Travis?
I have a question. Nancy Campbell, City Council, Lake Havasu.
Hi, Nancy.
Hi. My question to you is, we are excited to see workforce housing maybe making a breakthrough, and that would be in the county of Havasu Heights. We have several developers there and partners there that are developing land for the hopes of making workforce housing. We're finding Lake Havasu City may not be desirable for these projects due to the cost of land. And I was wondering what the county would do or how we can get you more involved if you haven't been already and may, and assisting with workforce housing in Lake Havasu City. I believe that's the best location for workforce housing because it is in connection to the tri-city, including Bullhead City and Kingman, quick access to the highway. And it's privately owned land that land developers, including myself and many others, are working in partnership to bring quite a large development of workforce to our community, which would be beneficial to so many people, including if you have people that work in Havasu, Bullhead, and the Kingman area. Has, I know that we've been to the county and been talking with you, and I know that our mayor and council has been working diligently on this as well. But Travis, what do you see we could do? I know the budget is coming upon us pretty quickly, but we could use all the help we can to really, with the county, to help us work on workforce housing.
Nancy, thank you for the question. I think that, absolutely, I'm glad that you brought this up. You know, I just had breakfast this morning with City Manager Foggan from the city, and we spoke about this very issue. I mean, this is workforce housing and the lack of it in our tri-cities in our county is a real issue right now for everybody. And, and I asked him, I said, what, you know, what do you think? How can we all come together to identify this and do something to try to solve it? So what I committed to doing, and I have the power to do it, is to bring all of the county people to the table. And he said, you know, maybe August, they would be prepared to have that type of a discussion. If we can involve all three of our tri-cities in that discussion, I would love to schedule that with you all and have you become a part of that, because I think this is a regional issue that's not going to go away. I know in Kingman, for instance, as far as workforce housing, we don't have it either in my, in my district, half of Kingman, you know. And we look at all the construction activity that we think is going to happen with two interchanges over the next five years. We don't even know we're going to put all those construction workers to stay temporarily, let alone people that are trying to move here full-time and aren't able to do it right now. So it's something that we need to put some time and energy and effort towards to solve.
Well, I just want to let you know, we have developers at the table, including, my husband has chose to partner in with these developers on property, and we are locked and ready to go. We just would love, love, love some more support from our county as far as infrastructure, anything we can do to start building up that Havasu Heights area. Because we have all of our workforce, your housing is still substantially cheaper than ours. So they're selling out here and moving to your location, the Kingman area and the Bullhead area. So this is our only last ditch hope, and we have some longtime pioneers of the community that have helped develop Lake Havasu City for decades are at the table and willing to work, and they've never really reached out too much to county and city help. They've always done it themselves per my, per se, but I'm asking for your help to make sure this all happens.
And I appreciate that. One of the things that was really important to me, being the former Vice Mayor of Kingman, is and not to say anything bad about the county, but it just seemed to me during my tenure with the city that the city would always give a lot, and we just in my view, the county wasn't really stepping up as much as I thought that they maybe should. So when I got in as supervisor, I thought, you know what, we need to do better. And as the county supervisor, I'm gonna, I have that commitment. I want to partner with not just Kingman, but with our cities. So I would lean on Mayor Miles, I would lean on Manager Foggan to be a part of that, that planning for an honest meeting. I'll make sure that our housing folks at the county, you know, that I get them to the table.
Please, thank you.
Collaboratively, we need to start working on some real action, that's some decisions, some stuff we can do to.
There's a lot that can happen out there, for sure. Thank you so much for your time.
Absolutely. You know, something else I'll mention is the county. We received over $41 million in ARPA funds back in April, and then again, last month, the board, I put up a proposal to evenly divide those funds five ways between the five supervisory districts, and that passed. Actually, the Bullhead City area just had their first project, our last meeting. It was Supervisor Angus put up. I think she's going to put about a million dollars of her funds towards treatment, a new treatment facility down in the Bullhead City area. But, you know, per the grant guidance, maybe there's some way that we can invest some of those funds into something related to workforce housing. I'm not sure if the Treasury guidance allows that or not, but point being, we need to come together, and I appreciate the question. And I think August is what we're trying to shoot for.
Okay. Thank you much.
Thank you. I think Tom's trying to see if anybody's muted. Mayor Brady, I think you may be muted.
Yeah, all right. Anybody else have questions of Travis? Are there any other elected officials or elected officials designate on the line now who would like to speak?
Mayor Brady, I wanted to let you know that our health director Denise Burley has joined us.
Oh, good. All right. Well, Denise, welcome. We kind of just skipped over you a second ago. But how about if we go back to item number six and get an update from you on what's happening with the County Health Department and our fight against COVID?
Right. Thank you, Mayor Brady, and I'm sorry, I had to step away for a quick phone call that was scheduling a meeting this afternoon. I wanted to provide some general trends on COVID cases and deaths and the variant. So I'll go through those, and if you have any questions at the end, please feel free to ask. And we'll try to get some more information to the public as soon as possible. So first, general trends. Mojave County has the highest case rate per 100,000 and percentage positivity across the state currently. And this is all as of Sunday, the 25th. So just so you know, the data was pulled at that point in time. Mojave County saw a 43% increase compared to the previous two weeks in cases. The average age of cases is decreasing. Throughout the pandemic, the average age of cases has been around 47 years of age. In May and June, the average ages were 42.9 and 40.4, respectively. And July is dropping into the upper 30s. Some trends on deaths. As you've seen Friday and Monday, we had, we've reported 12 deaths, I believe, in the last five days or so. The average age of deaths has also begun to increase, which I think you would all anticipate, knowing that we've vaccinated the majority of the 65-plus population. So those people are fairly well protected. And so we would start seeing those deaths in the younger age groups. We continue to see an increasing number of deaths in the younger age groups. In May and June, the average age of death dropped to around 65 years old from 75.9. And actually, it was about 74.5 for the entire pandemic. In July, the average further decreased to 62.6. In May and June, as a whole, what we saw is 32 and 25% of deaths were under 60 years of age compared to the 11% for the entire pandemic. July, right now, as of now, 37.5% of deaths are under 60 years of age. I don't know how closely you stay in contact with your local hospitals and healthcare systems, but we're seeing hospitalizations begin to increase again. There are staffing issues at three of the four hospitals, and they are working with us to try to address those through some federal resources. Throughout the pandemic, 27.5% of hospitalizations were in age groups under 60 years of age. This percentage has steadily been increasing, with now 42.1% of those hospitalized are under 60. And in June, we, and that was in May, and then 52.2% were in June. So the trends are certainly not in our favor at the moment. So, you know, we're going to try to work with the hospitals on getting some additional messaging out to the population, and certainly welcome your thoughts on how to approach this. We recognize that there's some hesitancy about the vaccine because it's still under emergency use order and approval. And we don't anticipate that to actually change until sometime in the fall. And with that said, that we expect that hesitancy to continue. But we're also looking at ways to get that messaging out, which might be more relatable to the public so that they can understand the importance of this vaccine to not just reducing cases, but also reducing the deaths, because that's a lagging indicator, realizing that people usually, the average hospitalization for somebody is about two weeks. So you would anticipate that to lag, that number to lag about two weeks also. So I know that there's been a lot of conversation around breakthrough vaccination or cases, and knowing that the majority of cases are actually coming from unvaccinated individuals. So of the just to give you some perspective, let me see here. Since vaccines have become available, 115 vaccine breakthrough cases have been reported in Mojave County. And what that means is a breakthrough case is someone who's been fully vaccinated and still contracts the virus. Okay, still gets sick. So 115 vaccine breakthrough cases reported out of 70,676 fully vaccinated individuals in our county. That percentage, as you can see, is incredibly low for those that are vaccinated. So there are cases, nobody will deny that, and shouldn't, because you have to recognize the purpose, the primary purpose of the vaccine is to reduce severe illness, hospitalization, and deaths as a result of the virus. It's also a prevention tool, but it's not, no vaccine is 100% effective. There isn't a single one out there. So this one is no different. Two out of the 678 COVID-19 deaths were fully vaccinated. So about 99.7% of the deaths were among unvaccinated individuals. Now, keeping in mind, some of those people never had an opportunity to be vaccinated because the vaccine wasn't available until late December, early January. So it's a bit unfair to lump them in, but just to give you some perspective, that the vaccine is really an effective tool at preventing the severity of this hospitalizations and death as a result of COVID-19. The variant is the Delta variant. It's the up and coming, as you know. About 73% of our cases and about, I think the state is probably sitting around that total as well, or that percentage of cases are the Delta variant. That particular variant is about 50% more transmissible than the UK variant, which was 50% more transmissible than the original virus. So we're dealing with a variant that is very effective at moving from one person to another. And that happens to be the result, at least partially, of the viral load that people carry as a result of contracting that, that particular variant. So we do have to find some strategies to increase vaccination rates. I think you're also quite possibly going to see changes from the CDC today in their recommendations related to vaccinated individuals wearing masks in indoor meetings and enclosed settings. And then also, I believe they're considering changing the recommendations on schools. And I know that's been a very hot topic. I understand that in the schools, but the goal is to keep kids and teachers in schools. So we need to do what, what's necessary there to keep everybody healthy and safe and keep kids in the schools learning where they need to be. So I just kind of gave you the Cliff Notes, if you will. Do I have any questions?
Questions of Denise, anyone?
Yeah, this, this is Dr. Zari. I'm a city council from Bullhead City. Can you hear me?
I can, yes. Hi, Dr. Zari.
Thank you for presenting. I think we got a very nice picture from you. So I have a few questions. Number one, one thing we are seeing that the age is going down for infection and for hospitalization and for death. I still believe that the people are not aware of immunoglobulin, which is provided by the hospital for COVID-positive patients. And what's happening, that this is the only medication in my experience since COVID started, which is a life-saving medication and prevent the hospitalization. So we need to promote more by the hospital and by, and by the health department, that anybody who is COVID-positive, at least talk with the primary care physician, get immunoglobulin. I give 45 patients, age 40 to 90, and they're all well, and they're out of the hospital till now. So we need to promote that. The problem with the younger age, if they don't have too many medical problems, they are not qualified for immunoglobulin. But even for little thing like high blood pressure or diabetes or obesity will qualify them for immunoglobulin and is available in all the hospitals in Mojave County. So I will advise promote that because this is the only life-saving medication right now. Number two, you know that you said that we have 2.3% breakthrough cases in Mojave County, which is people who are vaccinated and getting the COVID infection. You have any data is about Johnson and Johnson, or is Moderna, or is Pfizer, which one? Which vaccine? Because every vaccine has different, you know, chance of how much percentage you are immune or not.
Sure. Dr. Zari, the number, the percent is actually less than 1% of cases within Mojave County have been breakthrough cases of the total people that have been vaccinated in our county. But I do not have a breakdown how that relates to the vaccine that that person was provided. So I don't know if I can get that information, but I can certainly look for it. I think, you know, I don't necessarily want to throw out a message that says pick one over another because I think they're all effective, and we need to make sure that people take the nearest available vaccine for them, so not to necessarily wait for J&amp;J or Moderna. But I understand your point.
Okay. And about the reinfection and the breakthrough cases, there are two things. Number one, that people are getting infection who are getting, who are already vaccinated. But, but what about the reinfection of the people who are not vaccinated? They're reinfected with a COVID vaccine, COVID infection, because I have a lot of patients, a lot of friends, they're reinfected two times and three times, and even they're vaccinated. So I want to compare that to, like, we just don't want to blame unvaccinated people, police, you know. So I want to compare that to like, we just don't want to blame unvaccinated people, police, you know? So there are reinfected in the patient who are not vaccinated, but they are reinfected with the COVID virus. And there are people who vaccinated to get a reinfection. So there is any data between, separate between two?
Right. I would need to go through my notes. I do remember that ADHS provided some information on reinfection, and I can go back through that, but I also believe it was a relatively low number of reinfections in our county.
So what do you think as a county health department director? You think that county and city should think about masks?
You know, we're, we're going to follow CDC guidance. So I do anticipate that they'll make those changes in the near future, if not even later on today. And in that case, we will be making that recommendation moving forward also. But keeping in mind, we only have the, the authority to make recommendations. And I recognize some of the, the challenges that presents to local leadership and political bodies in moving that message forward. But we'll make it on a county level and we'll continue to stress the importance of all the preventive steps that people can take, which is still including staying home when you're sick. We're starting to see and hear about employees coming to work sick. And I know that's not just a county issue. And some of it has a tie to how much leave someone has and whether or not they have time off to take. And, you know, we all have great work ethics and we all want to come to work and contribute. And I think we're starting to see people kind of push that aside again and come to work ill. So stressing those messages, those preventive messages, and, and asking you for support in getting this message back out to the public in any way possible, because I think it's important for us to work as a team here to make this happen. And that's really the only way we can be effective.
Thank you. Let me tell you that you guys doing a wonderful job in our county, in the health department. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Is there anyone else who has questions of our health director?
Hi, Nancy Campbell. Yes, I have one more question. As a board of trustee on the hospital, I asked when we were there, how do you know if it's a Delta variant or not? And I was told that we test for COVID, that there's no specific test for Delta virus. How are you getting that data information?
So how that works is that there are a number of facilities that submit positive tests to the state, who then forwards it on to several labs that do genetic testing of that particular test. And they're doing, the state is testing approximately twelve percent of the total samples that are sent to them. And then they're testing for all the variants, so not just Delta, but all of them to track the percent of cases and to basically inform us so that we know how to message that out to the public and, and some of the concerns that are part of that.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mayor Brady, I have a question for Denise.
Go ahead, Cal.
Hey Denise, thanks for being here this morning and providing that information. There's a question I get from citizens at times, and no one seems to connect the, these two pieces of data. And I'm not sure if you're supposed to, but people that have actually gotten COVID and that have been vaccinated, what, what is that combination of those that have natural immunity plus or the vaccination to get to herd immunity? A reliable question that I get it often, so.
So they've, they've recovered and gotten the vaccine? So they have natural antibodies plus the vaccine in addition to?
No, they've gotten COVID and they have the antibodies from COVID, no vaccine, and then those that are vaccinated.
Right. There's still a lot of ongoing research around that topic, Cal. And I understand people are very interested in it, especially those that have, who have already been sick with the virus. You know, the CDC is indicating that people are protected for about three months, about ninety days. And then after that, that may wane. But I don't know that we have enough information at this point to be definitive in this area. And I don't want to make it sound like that information is, is concrete at this point. So I think we're still waiting for more research to be done to understand people's resilience to the, to reinfection, basically.
Okay, so there's separate conversations. You can't add the number of vaccinated plus the number that have, have gotten COVID to see what against herd immunity.
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I would love to, by the way, be able to say that, but no, not yet.
Well, that was kind of the same question I had, but, okay, so if you've had COVID, you're basically immune roughly for three months?
That's what the CDC is indicating so far. And I think, again, they're really looking at how, there's a lot of research around this, I guess, basically. And until we have more definitive information and data, I don't think they want to make any statements that would prematurely indicate that people have more protection than they really do.
Well, I think that's an important message to get out to the public because I know several people who have gotten COVID and they're not getting their vaccination because they think that they're bulletproof for the next year or two.
That's a great point. Thank you, Mayor Brady.
And then another question on the same vein, if you've been vaccinated, how long should we go while we feel like we're bulletproof?
You know, I think, again, more research, more research is, is ongoing here because the vaccines are really so new. They're really looking to past individuals to see how long that, that antibody response stays strong. So it's really a week by week, month by month determination, really, as to how long that'll push out. I've seen a lot of messages in the media that indicate that it would be a year out. I've also heard conversations about booster shots. At this point, CDC and World Health Organization are not recommending booster shots. So I don't anticipate that's going to change anytime soon. So as soon as I have more information, I will be sure to share it with all of you.
Do you or the state believe this is going to end anytime soon?
No, I do not. Our current trajectory would tell me no. And, and part of that is the unknowns, right? For even for those individuals that have recovered from COVID, we're unsure about their, that level of protection, how long that will last. Even with the vaccine, there's a chance that you could still contract the virus and become sick, even though that's a very low percentage. And, and certainly your case is likely to be much more mild. But there still continues to be so many unknowns that we just need to do what we can to, to protect our more vulnerable people, even those that you don't know are more vulnerable, which is the whole point about the vaccine not just protects you individually, but it protects those around you. And that's the other message we're really trying to get out is you may not know that your coworker or your friend has an underlying health condition. And that person might more, be more vulnerable to contracting the virus and becoming ill as a result of that. So we really need to figure out that message, it's really going to hit home for people, or messages that'll help tie it back and make it either more personal or at least tell a story that people can relate to.
I know that we, our pharmacies and Walgreens and others can, you know, can do the vaccinations right now. But a lot of people, I don't think, fully realize that. And it's not quite as evident when they drove by the community college and said, "A big sign out front, get your free vaccinations today." Is there any talk about starting that program back, back up again?
So not necessarily with Embry. What we've heard from most of the other providers throughout the county, and we have about fifty-four total throughout the county, is that they have the vaccine, most are allowing walk-in appointments. But I have asked my staff to check in with those providers to learn more about whether or not they're experiencing any, any challenges, any shortages of vaccine, because they're ordering now directly from CDC. The providers are ordering their vaccine directly through CDC, so we're not involved in that process any longer. We're not allocating. So for those particular agencies, we just want to make sure that there are no barriers to getting the resources that they need to vaccinate people as they come in.
And do you know what type of vaccine they're typically getting?
Typically, it's going to be Pfizer or Moderna.
All right. So anybody, yes, go ahead, Jen.
Denise, I've, I've been told that, that there is more likelihood of more mutations because of unvaccinated populations, because the more it's transmitted, the more likely the virus will mutate. And I think probably many of us have heard of the lambda potentially coming down the pike. Is there merit to that, that the transmission, the transmissibility of the viruses just increases or increase the possibility, probability of more mutations?
Yes, Mayor Miles, I think that would be a fair statement to make. I mean, as it circulates, it, the more it circulates in the community and throughout the country, the more opportunity it has to mutate. And that's, that's common among viruses, as you know, even with flu. It mutates and changes, and that's where, you know, they try to determine how best to tackle those different variants and mutations through their vaccines. But the longer it continues, the more variants we will continue to see. And keeping in mind, it's, each variant is different, whether or not it is more affected, more transmissible, or the same, or possibly even less. So there, it's unknown. And each one that comes about, we learn more about it as soon as it's available, that information's available, and they begin tracking it. So we learn a lot through the data that's provided through the sequencing. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, Denise, thanks for the update and keep our community safe.
Will do. Thanks, Mayor Brady. I appreciate the time.
All right. And let's move on to the next item. I believe that's item number eight, legislative update. I think we have Tom Belshi on the line. Is that right? Are you there, Tom?
Yes, Mayor Brady, I am here.
Well, thank you for joining us. You've had a very interesting past hundred and eighty days or more. So we're, we're very thankful for all you do for all of us. And why don't you give us an update on, on your thoughts and on the new laws that are out there? And thank you for that new update that you sent this week. It's been very helpful.
Great. As staff, this is, Mayor Brady, I think, interesting is a very good way to put this legislative session. This is the longest that we've seen in my thirty years of working over at the legislature. This is the longest and the most contentious legislative session that I've seen. As it was a hundred and seventy-seven days total, a hundred and seventy-one days. And that, they adjourned on June thirty, there's only been two other sessions in history that have reached June thirty. And this because they had way more money than they knew what to do with. And so when, when the legislature has more money, it, there's so many competing priorities. It often causes not just partisan issues, but inter-party issues as well. And we alone at the league staff tracked over four hundred and fifty bills. And out of the seventeen hundred and seventy-plus bills that, that were introduced, you know, that just shows that almost a quarter of the total bills affected cities and towns. Twenty-eight of those bills got vetoed, but four hundred and forty-six bills got signed. I was always taught that a conservative approach to legislation was, you know, pass one bill and repeal five. But every year, we pass hundreds and hundreds of bills. And so we're trying very hard to keep the cities and towns informed about the new laws that, that apply to them. Our new laws report went out, as Mayor Brady talked about. We hope that all of your staff will review that. We are also going out, I'm going to do an abbreviated version of our, because it would, it, it's about an hour and a half presentation right now that we feel, just to get all the information out. So we're going to be doing regional visits, and the tri-city area will be included in those areas. We're going out to Lake Havasu City, and that information will be going out sometime this week. But we're going to go out and we'll take more individual time with specific bills that your area may be concerned about. But I will go over the most important ones today, just to give you a little bit of a flavor of what was going on at the legislature. Lot of election legislation was considered. Nothing that, that we feel affects how our clerks do their jobs locally. There's, there's a lot of information, I should say, affects it in a bad way. There are new requirements that have been put out there, but a lot of that work is done by the county. And, and so there wasn't a lot of bad legislation that we were facing that affected how we do our day-to-day elections works in, in the cities and towns. There was also talk, a lot of law enforcement bills, law enforcement, anti-defund the police were some bills that we weighed in on. There was some law enforcement investigation bills that we weighed in on. A lot of stuff related to the wildfires that were going on. The COVID- nineteen restrictions changed the way that we're able to lobby. One of the great benefits of having our building right across the street from the state legislature is the ability to go in and see those legislators face to face. This year, no lobbyist had that opportunity. And it really does change the way that, that deals get done and, and how negotiations happen. When we're not included until the very last minute, it makes it more difficult to get things done. So those are all things that, in any one year, you know, ESA legislation was expanded. They've got scores betting. There's just all kinds of things that would normally be big-ticket items that a lot of people didn't even know passed during the session. The thing I want to focus on today is, is the income tax reduction. I, I want to make sure that, that elected officials understand that, that the league doesn't like to get involved in the state's tax policy. What we do want to do, however, is protect our, you know, our shared revenue. That's one of the two key components that the league is based on, is the protection of local control and our local revenue. And so what we were trying to do when, when we were discussing income tax legislation with the state is providing them data about how it would really affect us. How much money are we going to lose based on what you are proposing? And so we hired some economists to help us with that. And they provided this data. This is, this is an economist that is used by the governor's office and the legislature all the time for things that they do. They respect the opinion of this particular economist. And in the beginning, what they were talking about is just a, a straight revenue cut of six hundred million dollars. It was a ramp up from two hundred to four hundred to six hundred, a reduction. And that would have had a much lesser effect on the league in the beginning when they were talking about that. Then in the House, there was legislation to, to create a flat tax, which had one point five billion, almost triple the amount of effect on the state and, and local budgets. That is the one we spent our time focusing on. And they found it very challenging because there were legislators such as Mr. Boyer and Mr. Cook and all of the Democrats, who felt that it would have a significant impact, not only on cities and towns, but on state programs as well as schools and, and other things. And so they found it very difficult to, to get a majority behind that, which is, this single issue alone, I think, is one of the issues that drove the session to be as long as it, as it was. And so we provided them, the folks from the leadership in the House and the Senate and the governor's office with our impacts and asked them to keep those in mind and that we couldn't say that we supported the budget until such time that that was taken care of. Now, what it ended up being in the end is that we have, beginning in 2022, we're reducing the income tax rates to two point five-five and, and two point nine-eight above this amount and up to four point five for income tax above two hundred and fifty thousand. So they don't have a single rate. It's not truly a flat tax. But they, they do, they did decrease the three rates that are related to, to income tax. Decrease the three rates that are related to to income tax. We believe that with. We didn't just look at what that amount would decrease. We looked at the probability that those cuts are going to bring in some economic development. So part of what our economists did was look at what we call dynamic growth. That would be created by the tax cut. And so we think that will offset some of the losses. And so we are expecting that this will be a hold harmless for the cities and towns. But the way that this works is that we're only going to see. Certain decreases only if revenue continues to roll in into the state. It's a very complicated package. And so we're going to let you know year by year what we're expecting. Income tax to be because right now, income tax is the largest percentage of our shared revenue. And so more on that. Are there any questions? There was a lot. Of talk there. Is there any questions that I can answer about income tax?
The one question I had, Tom, was you sent out a notice when it was first proposed on how much we were likely to lose if. If it had passed in its original form. In its final form, are we still losing anything? Or have you done any calculations as to the impact to all of us?
What we can say is that with dynamic growth, we believe that it can be. You know, that it can be hold harmless. It's as close to hold harmless as we think we can get, you know, getting the passage. Now, there are those who argue that this is going to create such economic development in the state that it's going to be a windfall for us. There are others that say that, you know, we're going to lose our shirts. We believe. That it's somewhere in the middle and it's as close as we thought we could get. To a hold harmless as possible. We're going to be watching very closely the the trends on income tax. The the difficulty with income tax, obviously, is we pay it. We, you know, don't pay it as often as we do sales tax. We have a very good idea with with the other shared revenues. What the trends are. That's going to be more difficult with income tax, but we're going to watch that. But. We don't believe that there's going to be significant losses with this significant. When compared to what we were, what we were facing. I always like to take a conservative approach, and so we told, we have told the. The finance directors that we're going to be very conservative on the estimates that we send to you for for budgeting. But this doesn't, this doesn't start until. And still twenty twenty two, so obviously it doesn't doesn't affect this year. And as we watch the trends, we'll have better information for you.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Does anyone else have questions of Mr. Belshi?
This was just on the income tax. I I was hoping that. To tell you a little bit about. Election law amendments. We know that. Oh, the other, the other thing that I want to talk about while we're still on budget. Is one of the things that the state legislature. Did this year, which has been different from other years, at least it wasn't as quite as. Extensive in other years as it was this year is placing of policy issues in the budget. And so one of the things that happened to us at the last minute was an expansion of Senate Bill fourteen eighty seven. As you know, Senate Bill fourteen eighty seven. If cities and towns, if a legislator believes that cities and towns are in violation. Of state law by something that has been passed by the city council, they have the opportunity to. Push that complaint to the Attorney General. And if the Attorney General believes that we're in violation of state law. Then they can order you to to change that. And if you don't change it, then you can lose your shared revenue. They've expanded that now. So that a state legislature can, state legislator can file a complaint regarding local administrative actions. Including written policies, rules and regulations. So. Those are not necessarily things that are passed by the council. So, for example, one of the areas that I know where there are extensive policies that don't necessarily come to the the city council. Are policies that are passed by your police departments. I'm part of the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. And they have a recommended set of. Of policies that that they put in place. If somebody believes that those are in violation of state law, now those can. Can be sent to the Auditor General for the same process. This is a significant expansion of the law and. We're considering, you know, what there is to do about that because, as you know, fourteen eighty seven can has been. Crippling, even though we have won most of the cases. That have come our way, there have been those that have passed and it is severely restricted what cities and councils can do. And so we're taking a look at that. And we also think that it's a, it's a bad precedent to see so much policy. Being placed in budget bills. It used to be considered, when I first started thirty years ago, that was an unspoken rule that. Budget bills were about appropriations and not about policy. Policy went through committees and went through as bills. And so this is concerning to the league that because what happens is. When you're at June twenty eighth. And you have an agreement on the appropriations and everybody's ready to move. Then you get amendments that put policy in and members are worried about voting against. The budget bill because of not being able to fund state government. And so they they hold their nose and they vote yes on bills that would not have passed. If they had gone through the regular committee process and the Senate Bill fourteen eighty seven is an example of that. And so. It's something that we have great concern about. Also, with the election law amendments I mentioned, those don't really affect us, but. There are. Some new prohibitions that have been put into place. Local and state election officials can't accept private donations to help with the costs of elections anymore. The early voting list is now called the active early voting list, which means. That in order to continue to receive your ballot in the mail as part of the the active voter list. To receive it automatically, you have to have shown that you voted in. If you go two years without voting in your elections, then you can be removed from that list. Prohibiting election officials from delivering early ballots that were requested by. Were not requested by voters. Removing the authority of the Secretary of State to defend state election laws and assign this function solely to the Attorney General. And requiring ballots to be printed on specific types of paper that contain watermarks and holographic foil and and. Security background designs. So that is going to raise the cost of elections and. So that cost will be passed on to cities and towns during, you know, the regular election cycles. And if we have special elections. We'll be bearing the cost of those, but we didn't, we didn't oppose those bills. But it, we just recognize that. So if you're going to have a bill off cycle or an election, for example, for maybe a bond election or something of that nature. That will be a higher cost to cities and towns. The last thing I think I'll talk about is. One of the things that we, we felt really good about some things that we got done this session. One of those is the DOR fee and the firefighter cancer claims. What we, what is happening now is that. We're going to basically a presumptive. A presumptive process for for cancer. Most of the cancers that firefighters get now are included on on the list. But what we did there is that. Instead of paying the fifteen million dollars that we do every year to the Department of Revenue. For for their operations, that money will now go to a firefighter cancer fund. And if a city or town. Gets a claim. And those those costs at the end of the year that come out of your your pocket or come out. For a lot of you on this call, you're part of AMRP. If it comes out of AMRP's pocket. Then they can apply to the ICA and get reimbursement for those costs. And so it'll be very interesting to see. When this fund is actually funded and we, those claims are able to go through to see if that's significant enough funding. And if not, we're going to go back and see if we can get some additional help from the state. To help us with that because we believe that firefighting is something that everybody across the state. You know, relies on and unincorporated areas as well as incorporated areas. And so. That's what we're looking at, but we were very glad to get that funding and get that done. And. Now we can move on to to other issues that with the firefighters that we need to to work on. Just again. What I will leave you with is some of the things that we had as league resolutions, the Affordable Housing Tax Credit. That ended up passing it. And so that will be money that'll be available. For development of affordable housing in your areas. Short-term rentals, unfortunately, and we know what an important issue this is in your area. We continue to just run up against really significant opposition. By in the legislature for this, but we're going to keep working on that. And I'm sure that there'll be more legislation next year. There are even communities that we have heard that are considering. Working on an initiative for this or maybe referring the law that passed several years ago altogether. And so if that actually starts taking place, we'll let the cities and towns know about that. That is not something that the league is going to be involved involved in per se. Blight, we weren't able to get our bill a hearing just from the sheer number of bills that were out there. Blight was not something that they wanted to take a look at this year, but we're going to come back with that one again next year. Because we know what an important issue it is all over the state. Our newspaper public notices, this was a problem in in one of our cities specifically. Where they were paying higher prices. And getting lower circulation. They were required to go with a much smaller newspaper, pay triple the amount that they would have to in a in a newspaper. That had way lower circulation than the Arizona Republic in their area. And so we were able to get that fixed. Also liquor board membership, we're going to have a member that represents cities and towns on the liquor board now. And in many of our areas, especially at the border, console ID cards will now be accepted as as ID in the state. So those were all league resolutions that that we worked on. We passed most of them and for blight and. Short-term rentals, we're going to be back next year working on those. Just to make a plug. We hope that that you'll come out to our league sponsored regional. There'll be a much more in-depth. Discussion on those. We'll be sending out information to all of you. You'll get an email. Related to those and we'll also be doing the same presentation at our conference. Coming up, it it'll be. August thirty first through September second. It will be at the Biltmore Hotel. If you all haven't had a chance to register, we hope you'll do that. We will be doing it in in person. We'll be looking at, you know, the safety things. And we'll have more information on that as it comes out, but right now we're we're planning to meet in person. We won't be doing any kind of. Any kind of. Alternative. We won't be having any video sessions or anything like that. We just felt like it was either we meet or we don't, and it's very difficult to do. You know, both at the same time. And so we just decided to go ahead and meet. But we will be looking at some safety issues as part of the conference. That's about all I had for today. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there's other bills that I didn't mention, be happy to answer any questions about those.
Thank you, Tom. Do any, does anybody online have any questions of Tom? All right, Tom, thank you for your update and thanks for all you do for all of us.
Mayor's my pleasure, and I just want to make sure that everybody understands that. League staff does work hard, but it is your phone calls. It is your relationships with your legislators that really make the difference. We are successful each year because of those relationships and because of your legislators who. Help us out when when you put out the call. And so I want to, the league staff wants to thank you as well for. Your interest and your help during legislative session.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. All right, it's part of item number eight for the legislative update. I see that we also had Kevin Adam and Sonny Barelli as possible speakers, but I don't see them online. Am I wrong there?
Well, Mayor, I'm here. It's Kevin.
Oh, there you are. I'm sorry. I didn't see you there. Kevin, welcome and thanks for always participating. We always appreciate your updates. So why don't you tell us all the good news?
Thanks, Mayor. Well, if I if I left it at the good news, it'd be a real short presentation and that's. And that's actually a joke. We, there there was some substantial revenue that we received. At the state level and of course, back in Washington, transportation infrastructure is at the top of the agenda. And there is the potential for some very significant increases in revenue. That could materialize over the next couple of weeks, actually. But I'll start at the state level and as Tom indicated, it was an extremely. Interesting and contentious session. I I think on a positive note, I I think the state legislature more and more acknowledges the. Level of underinvestment that's occurring in the infrastructure. There seems to be. Greater interest in correcting that. It hasn't quite gotten to the point. Of increasing the revenue streams that feed into HERF. And then go to ADAT as well as the local governments for. For investment in the in the state and local street and highway systems. But nevertheless, there still is a lot of interest. And what we saw very early on were the bills that would have provided more funding on a permanent basis. Such as fees for alternative fuel vehicles. And indexing the the state fuel tax. Those died fairly quickly. But what we did see was that very early on, it was highly anticipated that there was going to be a very. Significant carry forward balance. Which would potentially provide a lot of one-time funding for various state endeavors. And we saw a lot of interest in directing a lot of that funding to the infrastructure. In fact, very early on. Legislative leadership indicated they were going to set aside two hundred million for that purpose. And ultimately, what happened in the end was they appropriated three hundred and twenty one million. In one-time funding. Now, two hundred and thirteen million of that. Went to specific highway and road projects across the state. I'd say in in large part due to the influence that your delegation has. Of that two hundred and thirteen million, that included forty six point seven million to repave the segments of ninety five. Through Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City. In addition to that, we also saw ninety million directed to ADAT. For pavement rehabilitation projects across the state. And another eighteen million to the State Aviation Fund for capital improvements at the public airports. And so. I don't think that the legislature is in a position to, or they don't, the the will is not there. To increase the revenues, but when a surplus develops. It appears that infrastructure is a very high priority. So. I think at least on that level, we're moving in the right direction. Now, that does bring up the concern about supporting earmarks. Rather than directing the funding into HERF where ADAT. And the COGS and MPOs, the the regional governments and the local governments have the ability to program and prioritize that funding. And so I think. That will be a growing concern if this becomes the sort of the the status quo with directing additional funding to infrastructure. I think we'll gladly take that three hundred and twenty one million. But if over the long term, if this replaces increasing the funding that gets programmed, we aren't going to. Maximize or make the best investment choices and probably not address our priorities as well as we could. But because of the popularity of earmarks, I'll let you know that our tech next year. In working with the Greater Arizona COGS and MPOs. We're going to develop a list. We're going to develop a list of projects to be earmarked. But those projects will be the priorities from across greater Arizona. As determined by the transportation planning organizations, so right now the COGS and MPOs are actively. Working on prioritizing their projects, this will be a. A total of fifty million statewide and will be directed to each re- region based on their population. And so the the WACO portion will be roughly five million. And the Lake Havasu MPOs will be about one point seven million. So prioritizing and selecting those projects is that process is going on right now. And we're expecting to have the let list done by the end of September. And pursuing legislation next session. So that that's and that's probably a good place to to stop before I transition over to the federal if anybody has any. Questions regarding the state legislature.
Questions of Kevin.
Yeah, Mayor Brady, I have a question, Kevin, I I might have missed a part of that, so. You're trying to get appropriations for fifty million dollars and then you're going to try to find projects for them?
No, Mayor, it would be, it would be the the opposite, what we are going to do with all of the greater Arizona COGS and MPOs is they are going to prioritize. Projects from each region, we are then going to compile a list and then draft legislation. Specifically for those projects, so the legislature will know what projects first, we're not going to get the funding and and then select projects after, it would be the reverse.
Got it, and so we we find that to be the best strategy or use of the money, we have, as you mentioned, the forty six million appropriated for ninety five, we still have to get that work done.
Yes, Mayor, and this would not impact the earmarks from this year. This is for the next legislative session and and so it it's going forward. We see this as the I I guess a second round of earmarks. One, I I think ideally it would be better if the funding was going into HRF and the existing programming processes, but. If 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 this is the method. That the legislature is going to to basically provide additional funding. You know, to the infrastructure, we see this as a compromise, it's still it's still earmarks. But they're projects that have been vetted and prioritized by all of the the transportation planning organizations, including. Lake Havasu MPO and WACO.
Yeah, great, all right, yeah, I'll have that conversation locally, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Kevin, do you have more?
Yes, and then at the federal level, tremendous amount going on, there's there's two aspects of it. First off, we are due for the reauthorization of all the federal, excuse me, transportation programs that typically happens. Every five years, we're currently on a a one year extension. Of the FAST Act, so we're into the sixth year of the FAST Act. Those programs will now expire at the end of September with the end of the federal fiscal year. And so the House and Senate are working towards five year reauthorization, in fact. The House passed their version, the Senate, not all of the committees that have oversight have completed their work. But the Environment and Public Works Committee, which is responsible and drafts the the highway title of the bill. Has completed its part of it. They both House Senate as well as the President's budget request for next year. All call for significantly higher levels in the at at a minimum, a thirty percent increase if you look at the. Senate numbers specifically for highways. Most are also pushing for a significant transit increase, although we the the numbers aren't quite as firm. On the on the transit side yet. The second part of the equation is this infrastructure package that the the White House. And now a bipartisan group of senators have come to an agreement on. Which would provide additional funding for the infrastructure that would be one more one time in nature. And on top of the authorized program levels. This week they are attempting to reach an agreement on the specific details. We are told that the that Environment and Public Works Committee. Numbers that I had provide that I that indicated that that will, that's sort of the baseline. Of this infrastructure package deal and then they would include. Over a hundred billion more for the highways and roads on top of that. We haven't seen the language for that, it's still being worked out, the the big challenge in the Senate is that. With the filibuster rule, they do need, they would need all fifty Democrats and at least ten. Republicans in order to get to that sixty vote mark, that's why it's so significant that this is a. Bipartisan approach and they do have ten Republican senators on board. So we do see this as the is the best option. For that additional infrastructure package to be enacted. If they do come to an agreement, there's a strong possibility that they'll basically meld this. With the the authorization language and the two will pass together as a package, there's there's a. Strong possibility that this could fall apart, it is seeing opposition. From both the far right and the far left and so it's kind of got to hit that sweet spot right in between. But but I I think the significant part of this is that basically. Everyone is talking about numbers that are significantly higher than the status quo, so it's very. Possible that we'll see some very significant increases, potentially doubling. The amount of federal transportation funding, at least over the next five to eight years. We still won't know, we don't know the mechanics yet, we won't see that till we see the language, so it could be a combination of. Increased formula, new programs, existing programs. New competitive grants, the potential for earmarks, it'll probably be some sort of combination of all of those. But it is looking like we we will see some increases at the at the federal level. If anybody has any questions there.
Questions of Kevin. No questions, all right, Kevin, anything more?
That's it, appreciate your time.
And thank you, Kevin, for all you do for all of us. All right, then let's move on to the next item, that would be an update from the Arizona Department of Transportation, Todd, I saw you were there, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm still here, Mayor Brady. I'll give you good morning, everybody, currently right now in this area under construction down in the Bullhead City area, we've got the Marina right turn lane. Boulevard project. Marina Boulevard will be closed down tonight and tomorrow night, we're going to be doing some. Micro sill work as part of the project and then currently. Out on I forty west to Kingman in between Kingman and Havasu. Will be wrapping up those various bridge rehab projects, that will be wrapping up at the end of this summer. Some of the future expansion projects. We're currently getting ready to see the stage three submit all the sixty percent plans for the West Kingman TI. That is in the fiscal year twen- twenty four budget at fifty five and a half million. We're tentatively scheduled to advertise that project in the August of twenty twenty three. We're currently in a partnership with the city of Kingman on the Rancho Santa Fe TI project on I forty. That tentatively is planned to be scheduled for advertisement this September. And then on the US ninety three corridor, it's actually down in the Everprime Maricopa County area, but I know everybody travels to Phoenix. We're getting ready to advertise the two phases of what we're calling the the gap B and A projects. Gap A will be advertised September and then. The gap B project will be advertised this fall, it's going to be a widening from. The junction of State Route eighty nine into where Techna Street is in Wickhamburg. And we're getting ready, we're currently working on kicking off the Kingman Crossing. Design project up on I forty, that's another partnership with the city of Kingman. And then in the area, we're going to have several pavement preservation projects. West to Kingman on I forty from about. Milepost just at the West Kingman TI out to milepost thirty three in both directions. That's going to be a fiscal year twenty three project and then we're going to have also in fiscal year twenty three. Down around the Havasu TI to milepost two on I forty. A pavement preservation project in both directions and then up on I forty. From the county state line, Mojave County, Everprime State Line. That's going to be from milepost ninety two to one oh seven in the eastbound direction. And fiscal year twenty four, pavement preservation project. That's the brief update I have for the council, any questions?
Todd, what's the status on replacing Alvin?
Currently his position is advertised, they advertised his position. And it will be closing this Wednesday and then our management will. Continue the recruitment process with interviews and everything, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of Todd?
Mayor Brady?
Yes.
Hey, Todd, Justin Lake Havasu City, has there been any conversations that you've been involved in or that you know about Todd with regards to the additional funding for for ninety five moving forward? Forty four million or so that was allocated by President Leo Biassucci?
You know, it came out in the budget and I know it's going to be from the Center Park. Down there south of you guys up to I forty, they're talking about doing the the Melon Phil. And that's as far as I have any updates on, I don't really have any updates at this time on schedule or anything like that, Jess.
Gotcha, okay, and then just that it'd be important for us to be involved as as a city is involved in that the scope, so we were talking about landscaping or. Aesthetics and sound walls and barriers and things like that too, if that we can take a look at some of those things then to might be contained within that that project would be very helpful, so anything updates you can provide moving forward would be great.
Yes, the the you and the county and Bullhead City, you guys will all be involved in that as stakeholders.
Okay, and and just to reaffirm, you said you don't know much about that schedule, but you have a general idea, are we talking about in the next six months? Next fiscal year and what what's the timing for some of those conversations to take place?
Well, I I do know that the design and the scoping and starting the projects will start this fiscal year.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you, Todd, and thank you for scheduling a cleanup for for Havasu here in a couple of weeks.
No, thank you guys for partnering with us.
Does anyone else have any questions of Todd? All right, Todd, thank you and keep up the good work. All right, moving on, item number ten, update from Sudden Link. Yeah, I believe we have Mike Horton with us, Mike, you're on.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, good morning, everyone, I'm Mike Horton, I'm the Regional Vice President for Market Engagement out of Flagstaff. But I have responsibility for all of the Arizona and California markets. I'd first like to touch on, as reported earlier by Health Director Burley, I want to touch on our COVID responses. You know, over this past month, we've been as suddenly looking to introduce some more relaxed COVID safety policies. But we always and continue to take our direction from our corporate health, safety and environmental teams on all COVID related responses. We do meet weekly with the health and safety leadership. It with my peers to review our corporate positions, our regional findings, ongoing guidance, and I took some copious notes about the challenges in Mojave County right now. With regard to our field. Is they continue to wear masks and will continue wearing masks inside of any customer premise or business. And may only remove their mask when they're not inside a a premise or a building as long as they keep their social distancing. Any of our other non customer facing field employees such as our maintenance technicians who are out on the bucket trucks. If they've been vaccinated, they do not work, need to wear a mask when they are not within a customer premise or within a social distance proximity. When you look at our retail centers, beginning the middle of June, June fourteenth, customers were no longer required to wear a mask when visiting Sudden Link retail stores. In addition, we have signage that advises all vaccinated customers, they are not required, if so selected, to wear a mask in the store. However, any employee that enters our retail facility will continue to wear a mask while on the floor at a counter or a kiosk. And I'll just tell you that our retail employees were quite grateful that our corporate health and safety put a relaxation measure. Because clearly it creates quite the conflict for a public facing person to have to speak to a customer and I think we all know the. Challenges around masks, no masks. But I will tell you enclosure with the the COVID piece, we like Mojave County have a very close reliance on CDC guidance. And we prefer to take a follower position with regard to any stance on the current restriction guidelines. So we're going to always err to the side of caution as a company when we're in public. Updating on our network maintenance and our new build programs. Within our field services team, we have increased our in-house staffing in Kingman, Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City. We've added in-house staff both in our outside plant area, which is the maintenance teams or our bucket truck technicians, as well as our field service technicians. We continue to add and evaluate contractors for our field installation repair work. We've also added some enhanced training and really stringent performance benchmarking for these external vendors. We are continuing to hire, but as as I think most all businesses and municipalities understand, it's gotten pretty difficult to find qualified. Personnel in these many months and like so many industries, the shrinking labor pool has become a challenge that we continue to struggle with in our staffing teams. From a service performance business and metric, over the last six months, we have seen really solid improvement. Not only in our on time arrival, but also in our service order completion by our technical teams. Our total service visit numbers continue to decline and that's a really a direct result in the improvement network maintenance. As I had said earlier, we have ramped up our outside plant technicians and correspondingly our nation, our our maintenance efforts and I will touch a little bit more on that in detail shortly. One of the areas that we continue to focus on is the continued reduction in our repeat call rates. We measure at a twenty four hour, a seven day or a thirty day interval. You know, one of the frustrations is you don't have time to do it right, but you have time to do it over, that's a huge feedback measure we get from customers. And clearly it's an area we are pushing really hard, not only with our in-house personnel, but we placed a very strong emphasis. To aggressively manage our contract labor partners and make whatever critical changes are needed. If if they're not making the cut, they they're going to be dismissed fairly quickly. We continue to make substantial investments and now you call this the tri-city markets, we call it our Arizona River System, that being Kingman, Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City. We are aggressively working on our node split programs and the node saturation for the river system markets is at a low point over the past two years in these three markets. Specific to Bullhead City, our node node performance has strongly improved in twenty twenty and our our metrics are actually some of the higher. The higher running in the company, over the last three months, we've been running at a ninety nine point five percent. And I'll touch on on something about that in just a moment, in Kingman, in the fourth quarter, we we really began some very aggressive node split work. And the problem is is that if you load too many customers or too many modems onto a node, obviously we start to see slower speeds, degraded performance. And we have multiple projects scheduled, not only for the second half, and I'll give you some statistics on our node split work here in just a moment. In Lake Havasu, we. In the first half and a lot of that is because we've been focusing so keenly regionally with Bullhead and Kingman. And we really have not seen a lot of the node saturation in Lake Havasu that we've seen in other markets. One of the challenges we're having, as a lot of industries are, is supply chain issues. Same thing, if you're trying to go buy a car, a lot of cars on the lot, but if they don't have a chip, you can't use the car. We have some of our equipment that we are acquiring is moving, but the issue really. We have some of our equipment that we are acquiring is moving, but the issue really is that every internet service provider in the country is really trying to acquire the same types of equipment um, as the consumption for bandwidth continues to spike over and over. But as the pandemic is winding down, we believe this should open up more. When I talk about our node splits and our node segmentation, one of the areas that we've been keenly focused on over the last six to nine months is to aggressively increase our upstream bandwidth. So we have two directions, you know, you've got a downstream bandwidth as a cable consumer where we would push a video TV program at your home. The upstream bandwidth is what we are doing right now. It's video teleconferencing. It's the Zoom medium. And one of the tactics that we've done in our upstream bandwidth is to increase what we call the, the available bandwidth. Uh, and, and that's through some, uh, additions of equipment, some different channel and frequency allocations. And a very interesting note for all of us as consumers, nationally, we've seen a ninety-eight point five percent increase in upstream bandwidth consumption over the last fourteen months, primarily due to COVID and the heavy use of video conferencing applications such as Zoom. Um, on the downstream network side, year to date, we have completed fourteen node split projects across these three Arizona River Systems, one of them in Bullhead, thirteen in Kingman. And as I said, in Lake Havasu, we have not done any, uh, node splits, but we've recently added new nodes into the market. And the reason we only did one node split in Bullhead in the first half of the year was largely due to the installation of what we call C M T S. It's a cable modem termination system. And I'm going to touch on that very briefly in just a moment. Um, in the second half of this year, we have nineteen projects scheduled across the three Arizona River System markets. Seven node split and upgrade projects in Bullhead City, eight in Kingman and four in Lake Havasu City. And for totals, this will represent thirty-three node split pro, projects for, uh, two thousand and twenty-one. Approximately five percent of the company total. Now realize I manage or we as a company manage two hundred seventeen markets. So five percent of the, of the budget of the two hundred and seventeen is going to our three markets here, um, in the tri-cities. And, uh, when we look at network expansion, right now we have, uh, eight new build projects that are currently active and underway. Six of these projects are active in Bullhead City, one in, in Lake Havasu City and one in Kingman. They are all scheduled for completion in the next ninety days. Six of these eight projects are also fiber to the home projects. Uh, an example would be Bel Air Heights up in, in Bullhead City, uh, Mayor Brady. Um, for Lake Havasu, we have, uh, North Point Phase D. And then we've got Kingman Crossing in Kingman, all of those being a fiber to the home initiative. I touched base on our cable modem termination system. We call it C M T S. And basically, just like the phone company, we have a central location that we call our cable head end. And that's where all of our services originate for a given community. And what that provides is carrier grade voice or telephone service, your high-speed data and your I P T V services. Over the past few months, our engineering team just successfully installed two brand-new, state-of-the-art, uh, the manufacturer is Aris, but cable term, uh, modem termination systems in Bullhead City. And this is a significant step forward for us to be able to add capacity, continue our node segmentation. Uh, and what that really does overall is, is it reduces the number of cascades that we have in the network. As you go down a certain line on a cable plant, if you get too long, the signal gets a lot weaker. And this way we're able to improve the speed, um, and improve customer service performance. Um, in both Lake Havasu and Kingman, this latest C M T S technology already exists. There is significant additional capacity for future node segmentations. And specific to Kingman, we are in the project, process right now of adding this third cable modem termination system in the Kingman head-end facility, uh, which will be completed by the twenty-fourth of August. Touching on our customer care, it's been a real pain point for a lot of customers, many escalations from, uh, some of you in, in, uh, in the municipalities, uh, specific to our call centers. Uh, I can report that our call volumes are down over this past year. And we certainly understand the frustrations that have been experienced, uh, because this is a most critical area for improvement within our company. We also understand that it takes time to regain the trust of the customer base. Um, but there has been significant discussion on performance. And we are continuing to see improvement, not only in our call handle rate, in the reduction of call abandonment and in the average wait time for both our customer service rep, representatives, which is the billing side and our technical service representatives, which if it's a technical issue, if you got an outage, you've got a slow speed to report. So we call those teams the C S R or the T S R. Um, but as with the field team, one of the biggest challenges for us is to make sure we get it right first time. And we continue with the analytics team to focus on the repeat call rates. If a customer has to call back a second time, we're not getting it done. I understand that. You understand that very clearly. Our customers understand that. And that is a training issue, and we have placed very strong emphasis, uh, for twenty twenty-one to ensure that all teams that are picking up a telephone call understand first time, every time. Um, I also want to report that effective June fifteenth, we reinstituted a supervisor callback process for our customer care. Uh, it has been revised and it has been updated for all call center agents. One of the frustrations that continued to hit my desk was a customer wasn't satisfied with the exchange they were having with the call center agent, and they asked to speak to a supervisor. And the process, I don't know where it came from, was that, well, the supervisor's not available. We have just, and as of this morning, there is a new update that just came out while we were on this meeting, um, that talked about our live escalation steps and a reinforcement to all call center agents that basically mandates each representative, because the calls are recorded, that they will open a ticket if, for example, Mayor Brady called in and said, you know what, that you've done fine, but I need to speak to a supervisor. We would open up the ticket, that ticket then would immediately be warm transferred to a supervisor in the call center who would pick up the call and speak with Mayor Brady or the customer directly. Um, and that has been a, a, an issue that we've been working very hard to ensure that we do not drop calls, and if we do, that we, we review the call with the agent. We give them one or two chances on that, and after that, it's a very significant disciplinary action. Um, just in closing, I want to touch real briefly on, on a product front. One of the issues that you've seen in cable television is what we call over the top. And that is Netflix, that is Hulu, Disney. It's, it's customers who want an internet connection, but don't necessarily want to buy two or three hundred channels of, of video. And so suddenly, as of June thirtieth, this, uh, initiated Sudden Link Stream, which is now available in all Sudden Link markets across the nation. And what it's going to offer is more than fifty live streaming channels. Customers have applica, uh, access to thousands of apps, streaming such as Google Play, no different than you would have with any other carrier provider. There's a small piece of equipment, and for any customer that is on our one gigabit market plan, that, that piece of equipment is free. Otherwise, I think it's five dollars. And then very lastly, uh, in twenty nineteen, we did launch Altice Mobile. It's a mobile service alternative to your traditional wireless carriers, such as Verizon Wireless, T-Mobile, A T and T and others. And effective, uh, July twenty-fifth, which was this last Sunday, we have rebranded Altice Mobile to become Optima Mobile. And the only interesting part on that is that we made a very significant deal with the nation's largest carrier, T-Mobile. And when you get down to the cellular business, there really are three players. And all smaller companies actually ride those networks. So, um, Altice Mobile now rides the world's most reliable five G network, T-Mobile. Um, there are a lot of options that customers have. The interesting part from a consumer perspective is rates start at fourteen dollars a month. So if that is of any interest to you, my wife and I, uh, finally rolled over from Verizon and I saved dramatically. And the service has been pretty doggone good. So, like I said, I'm not here to, to make a product pitch other than to let you know that that was a, a, a mobile alternative that customers may want me, be interested in. So with that, Mayor Brady, thank you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that update, Mike. Does anybody have any questions of Mike? Okay, then let's move on.
If I could?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brady. Uh, the Justin Lake Havasu City. Uh, Mr. Horton, thanks for being here with us. Um, you talked about some of the challenges for the different communities as the, as the infrastructure within the, the nodes, right? And, uh, um, I know that your company inherited a lot of, uh, situations that where there's too many connections on each of these neighborhood nodes. Um, you may also mention that there's some, uh, some, uh, additional nodes being installed within the, the community. Do you know how, and I think it's in Havasu, there's four next year that, uh, we're going to be?
Jess, there's four, uh, planned splits through the end of this year. Um, you know, at any time that, that I get an escalation from you, Brady, or, um, from Jerry, one of the issues that we go through with our engineering team is, what is the condition of that node? Because, you know, if a customer's going to report slow speed and, and we, we, we report, um, what we call node grade. And so if I went out to that neighborhood and that node is operating hypothetically in, in Bullhead right now, across the average, it's ninety-nine point five percent the last three months. And the customer says, yeah, that's great, but I have slow speeds. That's where the technician needs to go isolate the drop wire. And I'll give you one misnomer is Wi-Fi, the wireless fidelity. It's a radio signal within your home. I have a nice home in Flagstaff, Arizona. I subscribe to a four hundred megabit service. And Jess, when I'm in my office, right there at where the connection comes wired into the house, I get four hundred megabits. My wife works in the basement wirelessly, even using what we have as a Wi-Fi extender. And I get about forty megabits. And we get a lot of customers that say, your internet is terrible. And the problem is, is that wireless fidelity or radio signals, whether that's, you know, a, a, an FM, AM radio or in this case, an internet radio signal. There's a whole lot of electromagnetic interference of the wires in the wall, the walls you've got, the floors, et cetera, that create challenge. And that's where, uh, when we get those escalations, one, we check the node to make sure that there's network health and integrity. Then as we visit to the premise, it's to go out and try to educate the customer, why are you reporting the slow speed? And if you take the example that I just enumerated, many times, I don't care if you're Comcast or any other carrier in the nation, that same problem exists due to the technology.
Sure, and I appreciate, I appreciate that, Mike, and I think that, uh, yeah, I mean, there's issues with routers, but obviously there's a, there's a the nodes and the strains in the system are causing issues too. What I was trying to get at is the replacement of four in Havasu. How many, uh, um, are needed for that replacement? What, and going out ten years, how many, how many of these splits or new nodes are going to be implemented in Havasu and, and how many need to be addressed?
But that's a really good question, Jess, but it's, it's really a function of engineering. And typically, you know, with a, a node, we like to consider it a neighborhood. We like to add no more than two hundred to three hundred modems, and typically, most of our service these days is a data-oriented service. So it's internet. And so we try to ensure that we're not, if a new customer, and as we add new customers to that neighborhood, if we added, you know, another fifty customers and we're now exceeding that two hundred and fifty or three hundred, uh, customer saturation on that node, they're all contending for that same issue. So it really is a function of time, um, some of it's a, a obsolescence on the equipment. So it really is kind of, uh, you know, w- we evaluate that on a quarterly basis with our engineering teams. But, and I would be glad, I'm going to be coming to Havasu in probably the next month. Uh, I would be glad to sit down with you and go through in more detail if you'd like to kind of articulate some of the discussions I know Mayor had brought up as well with regard to some of the fiber deployments, as well as kind of some of the expansion possibilities, not only the existing network, but of future growth.
But you just don't have a number readily, readily available then?
No, not at this point. I, I mean, I don't have, you know, not on a, a forecast, because the engineering teams are going to do that based on kind of a severity and a priority.
Okay, I appreciate that, Mike, and look forward to some future conversations of what we can do to get some more infrastructure out here. And it's, it's not, it's the inconsistent services that, uh, we hear the most from our, our, uh, intermediate services that we hear for the most from our, uh, our residents that when they're contacting City Hall. So looking forward to talking with you and trying to figure out some solutions.
Thank you, Jess.
Mayor Brady?
Yeah, Ron, go ahead.
Hey, thank you. Um, so Mike, uh, I was, I've been looking forward to your presentation. I wanted to share with you a little, uh, pain point that we've been experiencing in Kingman. And, you know, your offer to come out and visit the tri-cities area is probably one that would be readily accepted. And I just want to share with you that our main newspaper, uh, the minor moved from their location to our down, our downtown. And in that move, they requested uh, internet, uh, connection with Sudden Link. And their node, they were told by their technician when they were hooked up that their node was overloaded and that, uh, they basically had their servers going on and offline, uh, every fifteen minutes, to the point where they went and bought cell phones, because their, their telephone system was hooked uh, to the internet, you know, as many systems are. And I had a call from, um, the paper wanting to know who to contact from Sudden Link, because they were getting no help. And so I, I provided, uh, you guys had, uh, talked to us, I sent an email and never got anything back. The newspaper's been pretty frustrated. And I'm, I'm telling you, I, I really think that regular contact with the cities would be helpful so that we can help you be more successful in our communities, because in, when the newspaper doesn't like you, that's, that's kind of bad, right? Those people that, that buy their ink by the gallon is not someone you want to upset. So I just would recommend and and hopefully we have an opportunity to visit with, with Sudden Link representatives, you or whoever our representative is uh, on a more regular basis, so we can help you, um, deliver better services and point out where those pinch points are, because pissing off the newspaper is probably not the best place to start for you guys.
Ron, thank you for bringing that up, and I would, uh, i- if it's okay with you, I'd like to set time this week, one that you and I could have a preliminary discussion. I was just looking in my file. I'm quite intimate with that discussion. I don't know if you'd like to enumerate this at this point, but, um, uh, again, as I had just spoke with Jess on the issues of the demarcation between our network and the customer equipment, they've got extensive servers and routers that sit behind that. Uh huh. There, there, I did, there's a more involved discussion on that, but I would certainly make myself available, A, to have that discussion with you, two, to ensure that you have my direct contact. And if there's ever an escalation of any magnitude at all, I absolutely stand ready to take that and, and, you know, one, in behalf of the customer, but certainly in direct city to make sure those customers know they don't need to, you know, when it's a frustrating point like that and or this is a more than a complex issue, because it should be a simple move, I agree. But every sale is a technical sale, and, and I'm not trying to minimize under any circumstance. But I certainly can show you exhaustive research with our network operations teams, our business and our I P engineering analysts that went through and were requesting intrusive testing with the customer, not only on our side of the network, the edge of the building, but as it goes into their building and it becomes their equipment and property. So I think there's, there's further discussion on that, and we've not heard back from them. I've spoken to the president of the company and then Daniel and whoever the, uh, the principal that is here in town. And Daniel's their director of I T out of Prescott. But that, I mean, I, like I said, if I, uh, um, can get your contact information, I, I've got it, I think, Ron. I'll, I'll reach out to you and set time for us to have some discussion.
That would be great. I would appreciate it. The other piece is that I just, again, we've talked about it in the past. I know the other communities have brought it up, and that is escalation of bills are just, it, it's, the way to set people's hair on fire is to have a set price for, for whatever services you've agreed to. Go from a hundred and twenty dollars up to a hundred and fifty dollars, up to a hundred and seventy-five dollars. And, and it's just, it's going to be, it's going to leave a bad taste in people's mouths. And that, that's, I'll just leave it at that. I look forward to talking to you, Mike. Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
So any, anyone else who has questions or comments for Mike? All right, Mike, thanks for participating and, um, you have a great day, all right?
Thank you, Mayor. Folks, have a great day.
All right. It's getting near lunchtime, so let's move on to the final, uh, item on our agenda, and that's the mayor reports on city updates. Why don't we start with ladies first? Jen?
Thanks, Mayor Brady.
Thanks, Mayor Brady. Well, I like to say that in Kingman, things are just getting better and better. But I think part of my report just ties in with what Todd reported on. We're really looking forward to the Ranch of Santa Fe project, really getting jump started this year, this September, we hope. And we also are meeting now with the hospital CEO, Will McConnell. I've met with him. I know Manager Fogg and is meeting a number of times to discuss moving forward on Kingman Crossing with the engineering and and the design of that. That project was kind of pulled, put on hold due to COVID. But I happily report that there's a lot of interest in in starting that back up again and getting the momentum going. I'll also mention that our council actually, after about a year and a half of analysis and public meetings, maybe almost two years, had did come to a compromise and has been able to pass development fees, growth paying for growth. And this has been very controversial in our city. I imagine it would be in any city. But but we were able to find common ground with our council, and actually, these will be implemented in October. And so we do, we know that this will help pay for incremental cost of growth. It doesn't cover, of course, the cost of expanding services and growth totally, but it does contribute to it. So we're glad that that happened. I also want to thank everyone that was participating with Senator Kelly's visit and the Veterans' Millis ribbon cutting and the honoring of our veterans. I know Vice Mayor Kathy Brooke was there, and also Mayor Sheehy, and as well as our supervisors, Liam Felter and Bishop. So we all had a chance, and as the college president also, we all had a chance to at least have some face time and discuss the issues that were important and prioritized in our in our region. And so I really appreciate everybody's participation on that that day. I would also invite everybody to continue to get your kicks on Route sixty-six. And we just had a fabulous grand opening and ribbon cutting this past Saturday night of our new Route sixty-six drive-through shield. Now, this is something that the city has wanted for many years, especially our car clubs and all the people, the tourists that come through here. They, we had a movable one that we would put up for certain events. But so many people really want to drive through a shield and have a picture of their car and themselves. And so we put in a permanent shield at our Powerhouse Visitor Center. And we had a really nice crowd show up Saturday for the lighting of the shield, because it lights up with the neon lighting. It's really cool. And I think we're going to attract a lot of tourism on towards on sixty-six, who really want to take advantage of that placemaker. It really is a placemaker sign. We also had a ribbon cutting for the expansion of our golf course facility, which makes it more amenable to heavy holding some events there. And in fact, we we had our hospital fundraiser there just a few weeks ago, and it was really nice. And they've just expanded the the outdoor patio and then closed that, but also put in some really nice amenities, just to help facilitate picture-taking and and having weddings or events such as we had there. So we passed our budget, and I'm really pleased with some of the things that are going to start happening this year. A little later this year, we're going to finally start on our downtown streetscape project between Third and Fifth Street. We're going to start, we we have the concept plan, of course, completed. But we're going to start between Third and Fifth, and there'll be sidewalk expansion, pedestrian, more of a pedestrian pedestrian-friendly environment with landscaping, street furniture, all of those nice things. It also helped us on our flooding and drainage issues in that area. So we're going to start that, and we're also going to make progress on our twenty-acre soccer park, which is more in the east east bench of Kingman. So we have a lot of a lot of good things. I'm looking here to see if, I think that's really what I had noted here. But things are going very well, and we look forward to a lot more progress that's coming here.
All right. Thanks for that update, Jen. Cal, let's hear from you next.
Good afternoon. Good morning. Thank you. I'll be brief. We just have a few things that of note. One item is our community, because of growth, we've had to realign some of our garbage pickup days, so those will be shifting. You can go to the Lake Havasu City website to take a look at what that is. They're minor shifts, but nonetheless, they will impact residents that are in those areas. We're also working with Senator Kelly's office on a grant to help with some repairs and upgrades to our police facility. It looks very promising, and his office has been interfacing with our team in a in a really good and a positive manner. It's looking like it could be in the four-million-dollar range to help us with those those improvements. We, of course, we've talked about it earlier, but we are working on workforce housing. There's a variety of different items that are out there. We're just waiting to to at least get one project to push through. We don't care which project it is, just one, and then the others hopefully will come on board. We we need diversified housing. We need attainable housing. We need workforce housing. It's obviously a struggle we're all all going through. And then we also just recently underwent a citizen survey, where our citizens were surveyed on their thoughts and feelings about city government, how we're doing, what we're doing, and getting their feedback. This evening, we'll have that at our council meeting. We'll have a presentation to the council and, of course, our community about how we're doing. So we're excited about that. And we also are planning our fiftieth anniversary, and I'll reach out to Mayor's Brady and Miles as we start firming up the dates. But we're hopeful that Governor Ducey will be here, along with some of our federal delegation and folks from the City of London as well. So as that comes together, we'll we'll get that on your calendar, and hopefully, you can join us in in that celebration.
All right. Thank you, Cal. All right, from Bullhead City side, what have we got to say? Our beaches, we're creating more beaches down at Community Park, and every weekend, we're inundated with Californians and Nevadans who are flocking to our shores. And we're we're trying to do everything we can to make the water on the Colorado River safe. So it's it's an interesting experiment. They will be starting construction on the bridge, probably within the coming months. We've met with the, you know, contractors and the project managers. I guess the most important, we're moving forward with the transfer of Epcor. Authorization was just given by our city council at our last meeting to purchase up to ninety million dollars worth of bonds. So we will be going out on that in a very short time. We're we've already, we're trying to staff up for that now. So we expect that probably within the next ninety days or so, we may might actually take over the the operation of Epcor's water system. Epcor has been fighting us every step of the way. They filed a challenge against Judge Gerber's decision on the bond amount that was required. They basically said, Judge Gerber, you've got it all wrong. You used the wrong laws. They appealed to the Arizona appellate courts, and they heard that quickly after reading the pleadings and dismissed it as being a moot point. So we were very happy to see that there was no delay in in reaching that decision that could have delayed the next steps in the process. And then lastly, we're back to a borough problem. It was a few years ago that we were reporting about all of the accidents that we had on our Parkway and Highway sixty-eight with Burrows. And for the last two years, after the BLM has removed many of the boroughs, we haven't had that problem. But now with the continued drought and the population increase in the Black Mountains, our borough population is growing, and they're coming down looking for water. And we've had, I think, thirteen strikes just this year alone. So we met with the Bureau of Land Management, and we're going to see what we can do about alleviating some of those borough strikes in the future. So those are some of the highlights of what's going on here in Bullhead City. But if you wanted a full update, I could speak for hours about all the good things that are going on here. All right, with that being said, it's now going on two minutes until lunchtime. Bullhead City is happy to provide you with lunch today on your own. Go find it for yourselves. All right, is there anything else that we need to discuss before we adjourn? How about a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Suck it.
All right, we have a first and a second to adjourn. Thank you all for participating. You all have yourselves a great day. Bye, Mom.
Thank you. Bye.